Good morning and welcome to our Minnehaha County Commission meeting for June 18th. I'm going to call our meeting to order and note for the record that we do have a quorum of commissioners present. We have the absence of Commissioner Jen Blyenberg today. Before we get started, avoid embarrassment. Silence your cell phones so it doesn't go off in the middle of the meeting, please. I'm going to ask you to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Our consent agenda is the business of the county, the bills to be paid, personnel reports, that type of thing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on our consent agenda? Seeing nobody rushing, I will ask for the commissioners if they would like to remove anything from the consent agenda. I would look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Bennika?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on now to our regular business. First agenda item
is the City of Sioux Falls briefing on tax increment financing, 27 downtown rail yard development. We have Dustin Powers from the city. Good morning Dustin, welcome.
Good morning County Commission Dustin Powers with the City of Sioux Falls Planning and Development Services Department. Today, we're here to share with you a development proposal for the downtown rail yard property that's bringing, brought forward to our city council for consideration. Before we get going on that, I just wanted to provide a brief history of the downtown rail yard development. In 2015, after over a decade's worth of discussion, we were able to acquire the railroad property from Burlington Northern Santa Fe using federal dollars that were set aside or earmarked for the purchase of the property back in 2005. So actually, our South Dakota's congressional delegation was able to earmark those funds in 2005. It took us until 2015 to actually purchase the property. Following closing on the property in 2015, it really began a two-year process for us to transition Burlington Northern Santa Fe out of the rail yard property. They moved their facilities over to Rice Street and on the northeast side of town. During the transition period in 2016, we were able to hire RDG Planning and Design out of Omaha to help us write a vision for the rail yard redevelopment area that resulted in our rail yard redevelopment plan, really targeting how can we use the rail yard property to leverage that property to assist with the redevelopment of the entire East Bank area, as well as connecting the neighborhoods to the east with a wittier neighborhood, connecting to other public investments like our River Greenway and the rest of downtown. The plan called for mixed-use development that provided opportunities for living, working, and leisure. It called for connectivity to connect, again, all modes of transportation. This area of downtown was very large blocks of land, not a lot of north-south connectivity, and then again, as we discussed, really connecting to the adjacent neighborhoods. Once the plan was adopted, we ultimately, in 2017 began solicitation for redevelopment of the rail yard property. Our first property we sold was in 2019 to append our properties, which was parcel C on the map. That resulted in rail yard flats, which was over a $13 million development, 42 units and 7,500 square feet of office and retail space. We were able to leverage parcel B on the map as part of the Shrapa development that's currently under construction downtown. That's resulted in over $200 million of development with over 230 residential units, over 120,000 square feet of office, 60,000 square feet of retail space, as well as a 650 space parking garage to support the development, as well as the public parking of the area. And today, we're really here to share with you the development that we're under negotiation on parcels D and E, which is south of A Street with Christianson Development. So Christianson Development is a developer out of Des Moines, Iowa, that focused extensively on downtown development. Specifically, if you've been to downtown Des Moines, the East Village on the east side of the river, they've played a major role in that redevelopment with over 15 projects on that side of the river. So they've assembled a team of local partners to really assist them coming into the market here because this will be their first project in Sioux Falls and South Dakota. The concept on your screen is a redevelopment of, again, that rail yard property, and I'll flip back to that in just a second. This is really set up in two phases. Phase one is a 51,000 square foot building along A Street, the first floor being retail with four levels of Class A office above. That would be attached to a parking ramp that'll have 180 parking stalls to support, again, the development, as well as the public parking needs of the area. And then phase two is 233 market rate apartments across multiple buildings. So when we look at the image again on the screen, the office and retail building is on your right-hand side just along A Street, and then the parking ramp is attached to that. That would be that phase one of development. Phase two would be three buildings. There's two buildings here, and then a third building here. That will be the market rate apartments that'll be associated with the development. Here is a view of looking from A Street. So this is looking kind of to the southeast from just north of the Athan Railroad Center. This shows really the design of the office building, the first floor retail activation, and then rooftop amenities for the office tenants. And this is looking in the opposite direction to the southwest. What you can see here is, again, the activation of the retail along the street of A Street. You can also see, along with the development here, there's an extension of the bike trail, which is something that was called out within the rail yard redevelopment plan, and I'll hit on that again as we wrap up here in a few minutes. Looking at the financial details of the project, phase one, which is that office and parking ramp, is a $28 million project. Phase two of the apartments is $69 million for a total project cost of $97 million of development. Along with this is a request for tax increment financing. They've requested $8 million plus the financing cost to support the TIF. The TIF would be approved for a 20-year TIF. Our expectation, if the development sticks to the proposed schedule that we'll share next, that the TIF would pay off a few years before that 20-year timeline. The parking on the site, again, would be able to support not just the development, but it would be made available to the public for the public's needs downtown as well. When we look at this property on the left of the screen there, there's three parcels that are going to be included in the tax increment finance district. These are all currently city-owned and were former rail yard property, so they've generated zero property taxes today. Once the development's completed and we expend the life of the TIF, there'll be over $900,000 being collected and distributed to the taxing entities. The development schedule, pending approval of everything, would be, they would start late this fall, late this year, with the ramp and the office tower being part of phase one with early 2026 completion of those two projects. And then phase two would start no later than spring of 2026. What they're really doing is just understanding the markets and with a lot of the units coming on with Shrapa Steel District, and there's another apartment building on the south side of downtown called the 1-2, there are over 500 units coming online. A lot of those have been pre-leased, and I think by the time we get to spring of 2026, most of them will be leased, and that will give the developer the market that they're needing to start another project here in downtown Sioux Falls. The ultimate completion of all the project would be summer of 2027 to bring all of that project development schedule online. So the project consideration, we've presented this in front of the city council at their informational on June 5th. We're here today in front of you, giving you a briefing of the project and the tax increment district. We do have a scheduled hearing with the planning commission meeting on July 1st, and then following their recommendation, we would be targeting the city council's consideration of this likely in August of 2024. So with that, you know, we do believe the project continues to leverage that rail yard property to meet the desired objectives of creating density and higher development in a once really vacant parcel of property, and supports really, and complements the development that's already occurred in the area. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the project or the tax increment finance district.
Okay, before we go to questions, Dustin, I'm going to open it for public comment. We take public comment on all of our agenda items. Anybody here from the public? You have three minutes to comment on this agenda item. All right, I'm going to close it to public comment, move it to the commission. Any questions from the commissioners? This is a non-action item. Commissioner Kipley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks Dustin for being here. I appreciate this. There's the jurisdiction, this is really not in our jurisdiction, but we appreciate just the giving us the benefit of the briefing. And to that end, where we do have, you know, some standing or some interest in this would just be the property tax component. Could you just kind of give the elementary version of what a TIF is and what the impact? This would be Minnehaha County, City of Sioux Falls, and Sioux Falls School District would all have property tax funding and implications or not from this. Can you just speak to that briefly?
Yeah, so the way tax increment financing work is, works is, we have a base level of what that property is valued at today, which is zero because it's city-owned. We would create the tax increment finance district that will, once the development occurs, that raises the property value and raises the taxes that are being paid on the property. Because we've created, if we create the tax increment finance district, what happens is, is that those property taxes are collected based on that increment value. Right now, once the project's completed, we're expecting that to be valued at about $45 million, which collect about, in the, once initially completed, would be about $750,000. So the property owner that will be buying the property from us would pay those taxes. Those taxes are then filtered through the county and the city and distributed back to the developer to pay for those eligible project costs, so that $8 million TIF request essentially. That will, that would go until the TIF is, that TIF agreement and the encumbrances that we've agreed to are paid off. Once those are, the TIF is paid off, then all the taxes would be collected as normal and distributed to the taxing entity. So during the life of the TIF, what happens is the taxing entities don't receive the property taxes essentially. So the city of Sioux Falls won't receive any property taxes. The county, Minnehaha County won't receive any property taxes, other than, the school district has the ability to receive property taxes through a state aid formula, but that's also dependent on their budget needs and everything. So there's a lot more complicated process with that, but those are, this is an economic development TIF, so those are made up across the state.
Okay, thank you. And one follow-up.
Please.
Dustin, I think we did have a case, was it Tax Increment Financing District 15 just completed? And can you just talk through that as another just example of what happens when that completes, and then now we will be getting tax revenue from that parcel?
Yep, yeah. So I actually just sent notice a couple of days ago that we dissolved TIF District Number 15, which was over the Sanford Sports Complex area. That, again, that TIF was used to build the infrastructure that ultimately supported all of the development that you've seen out there over the last decade or so. That TIF was approved back in 2012, so it took 12 years to pay off the request associated with that. But now that TIF is paid off and all of the obligations are met by the developer and the city to pay that TIF off, that property out there is generating over $1 million in property taxes that now will be distributed to those taxing entities. So again, that's, that's a good reminder of, you know, these, these, these property taxes do come on board after the redevelopment. Ultimately, you know, if we, if we didn't do some of these tax increment finance districts, it's always a question of whether we would, that would still be vacant land today. And so this tool helps, is an economic development tool to help generate some of that development. And now, again, the benefit is, is that property is generating over $1 million property taxes for the taxing entities.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, I see Chris Lilla from our equalization might want to chime in too, because, yeah, there's the property tax we get annually, but then it also goes into the base of our growth factor, and I was just going to, curious if Chris could comment on that, as we're in budget season and growth is a key factor for us.
Right, right. Chris Lilla, Equalization Director. So TIF 15 was created in April 12th of 2012, and it had a base value of, at that time, when it was created, of $271,775. So the school, the county, and the city have always gotten the taxes that were generated by a value of $271,000. Everything that's built in the TIF after that, again, as Dustin has pointed out, the taxes collected from that goes to repay those bonds and those expenses. That TIF is now dissolved. For 25, pay 26. The increment value, the added value above when it was bare land, for 24 was $55,633,602. That is all increment. For 25, pay 26, that is all growth for the school, the county, and the city of Sioux Falls to increase their budgets because they are now going to collect the taxes from that value. So it's a, it's a big chunk, considering last year in '24, our growth was 802 million, already starting for our '25. There's 50, 55 million of it already chewed up. So it's going to be a big growth year. Part of that is due to this TIF dissolving, so.
Any other questions? Dustin, you had mentioned a 20-year bond. The TIF 15 took 12 years. Is that pretty typical to be paid off?
Yeah, state law is the max we can approve a TIF for is 20 years. And we do, we don't do bonds, publicly funded bonds. We require the developer to borrow those funds, and so they're at risk, the TIF paying off. What I would say is, is we have been pretty conservative with the, with the estimations that we put in our project plans. So when we work with Chris and the Equalization Department to kind of establish what the estimates are of this, these developments and what they'd be valued at if they are completed, we use kind of the conservative end of those. And we do a very conservative escalator of how property values will increase over the years. And so typically, what happens is, these, these projects are, in our initial projections, look like they're about a, you know, 19, 20 year payoff, but a lot of times, they do, they do pay off sooner due to the fact that we're conservative with those numbers. And so as property values increase and as, you know, our mill levies adjust every year, and so that's, you know, it's, it fluctuates how we do those projections. But ultimately, most of the TIFs that we've dissolved in the last five, 10 years since I've been here have been something that have paid off within or before the 20-year period.
When I was on the city council, is when we did the rail yard flats or all that land process. So it's really good to see all this coming to fruition and everything being done. And I'm glad you mentioned the conservative estimates, because I, I mean, the cost of building a parking ramp per lot is probably 10 grand, more than that. So when I saw your numbers, I was thinking, boy, those seem a little light. So I appreciate you, you mentioning that. So thank you for your presentation. Again, no action, but appreciate being in the loop on these things, and thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Thanks.
All right, moving on then to our next agenda item. A briefing on the post-election audit for the 2024 primary election. Auditor Anderson.
Good morning. Let me get my papers organized here. Okay, yes, we're going to talk about the post-election audit for the 2024 primary. Before I begin, and I did mention this in my briefing memo, that there may be some things that I would like to update you on. So the first one I would like to update you on, I feel I owe the state's attorneys, the state's attorney an apology. I used terminology last week in an interview that was, that I was threatened with a felony if I were to have tried to manually count ballots on election day for a spot check audit after tabulation of the ballots. I would like to do a better job in explaining the communication that occurred. I asked Daniel what the penalty would be if we did a manual count on election night, and he was explaining that, and his exact words are, "Potential elected official misconduct claims aside includes a range of misdemeanor to felony punishment." So I just wanted to set the record straight with that, that he was just answering my question, and I feel that I owe him that ability to make that public. The second item that is not in my briefing that I just need to update you on is the recount that was requested. So just to inform you and the public, the official recount is set for June 24th at 9:00 a.m. There were three candidates that requested the recount, and so we will be doing that process. I'm in communication with Judge Hellman on that, and we'll be sending out communication today, because I just got her letter yesterday late. Any questions on either of those items before I begin? Okay, so pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1217B-18 through 1217B-25, the auditor's office is responsible for facilitating the post-election audit for the '24 primary election. The post-election audit is to be conducted within 15 days following the completion of the state canvass. The cost of the post-election audit is to be reimbursed by the Office of Secretary of State. The post-election audit must be conducted in 5% of the precincts and must contain 100 ballots per precinct. If the ballots in a precinct are less than 100 ballots, then additional precincts must be randomly selected. Precincts must be randomly selected anyway, as well as the contest, one statewide contest randomly selected and an additional contest must be randomly selected. The audit must be open to the public. The results of the audit must be sent to the Secretary of State and presented at the next county commission meeting after the post-election audit. The results of the audit must be included in the meeting minutes. If the results of the audit show a discrepancy, the impacted candidates must be notified and have seven days to file a verified petition requesting a recount. Also administrative rules, 5223-1 through 5223-15 give further detail about the procedures and process of the post-election audit. At your June 11th commission meeting, there were specific questions that were asked, and so I just wanted to go over those answers. So where and when will this happen? June 25th, in the training room at 9 o'clock. We will begin with training at that time. The audit itself will begin at 10 o'clock, and that's going to be here in the administration building on third floor using the training room and the multipurpose room. We are planning to have 50-member board. Actually, there's 51 because I included on the board the, an extra person to be a supervisor and to assist with training. I or my deputy, Mike Mathis, will be up there during the entire time also. So we will just be assisting with any staff assistance that the audit board needs. We have multiple-party representation. So as of yesterday, when I sent the notices out, there were 24 Republicans and 27 total non-Republicans, including Democrats, NPA, Independent, and Libertarians. Per resolution, MC 2403, which was approved January 2nd of '24, the pay for the post-election audit board is $18 per hour. I did get confirmation that with proper documentation, which we're going to get page from the state's attorney's office, for anyone that has already said that they would like to volunteer that time, we're going to make sure that we have that documented ahead of time. The estimated count time, I think the estimated count team, count time with that team is going to be three hours total, but if we factor in breaks and sorting time and training, probably about five hours. And if we estimated that time and the amount of people, the maximum cost that I would expect would be $4,500 in doing a full post-election audit. That's 100%. But like I said, many people have stated that they would like to donate their time, and so I imagine that that cost will be reduced approximately in half. Also, the state is to reimburse the cost. Now, I don't know, since we're deviating from 5% to 100% yet, what that's going to look like, but I know that we will be well under budget on that. I've also included in my briefing memo the codified law and the reimbursement of the cost, but I'm not going to read through all of that, but it's there for your convenience. So the big question was why, why I changed my mind, why I wanted to do a 100% audit. So I'd like to explain that. I feel it's the best format to allow our citizens to participate in verifying the results of the election, and I don't think that 5% of an audit is an adequate amount to verify an election. We have a great opportunity, since the turnout was low in this election, to complete the audit, and since taking my oath of office, I have rallied for transparency in our elections and have had many discussions, not only with our state's attorney's office, but with you as a commission board, about doing other audits. Specifically, I was concerned about our 2020 general election, since the records no longer have to be sealed. I was advised to, at the time, to not audit those records, and even some of you on the commission board had suggested that, that may be illegal, but I don't see, I haven't found any reason why that would be illegal. In using resources available to me, I was able to get an initial analysis completed of the 2020 general election by using the digital analysis. The results of this analysis were completed and emailed to me on May 14th. I didn't have a lot of time during that timeframe to look through everything, so I was not able to do that until the weekend after the election. But the results of that analysis were alarming to me, and I did find there was some abnormal information. I also further looked into what I had for the audit log, and this is just a photo, since I'm, I can't share the audit log publicly. I analyzed the audit log, and this is a summary that I came up with for that audit log. And so it led me to have deep concerns about the, the information for the 2020 election. I'd like to preface that this has nothing to do with a candidate that has won or lost. It just has to do with the numbers and whether or not our election was properly canvassed and properly certified. So in my analysis, I, as you can see on here, I have a difference from the cast vote record of total ballots and the total ballots counted per the audit log of over 24,000. I feel like it would be very prudent to still audit the 2020 records since we have them. We were mandated to keep those records due to a lawsuit. That lawsuit is over with, and we still have the records available to go through those records and for their audit. I do have that summary here, and I, so that's the main reasons why I changed my mind on wanting to do a full audit this time. I also would like to state that in doing the '24 primary audit, I believe every audit is, should be, or every election should be audited. It's very important to make sure every election is secure. So if I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All right, before we go to questions, I just personally want to say thank you for, this is our first time going through an audit, so new state statute, appreciate the briefing. I am going to open it to public comment, as we do on all of our agenda items. Anybody that would like to comment has three minutes. I just ask that you make sure that for the record, we have your information, your name and such on the signup sheet in the back of the room. So we'll go straight to public comment. Anybody in here like to address the commission about this agenda item?
Michael Stangland, Minnehaha County. This right here is, first, why there are so many people that support Lea Anderson, because she is showing that she is putting forth the work, that she wants open transparency, that she wants things to be honest. There has been so much talk about, you know, she's causing trouble, or that she's, you know, however many ways you can say, you know, not doing the, doing things the way people would like her to, but there is a reason that, you know, when she needs it, there are people that show up for her. You know, you'll look at all You know, you look at all the people in this room, you look at the people in the overflow. I mean, how oft, I mean, typical meetings of this sort, how many people do you get? And how many people are showing up because they support what Leah Anderson is doing? They support the work she is putting in? They support the fact that she is an individual that actually wants to live up to what she said she would do while running for office? And, you know, you mentioned, you know, hey, we, you know, looking at this and, you know, not doing an audit before, and I think that, well, this, this shows, hey, maybe we should have done an audit before. We can't go back to the past, but, you know, we can learn from the past to look to the future, and hopefully, you know, what we learned from this and what we're seeing here will give us reason to, as, you know, as the county goes forward, to, you know, to, you know, make these audits a normal thing, have this information open to the public so that in a time when people are, you know, weary and are concerned about what election results are, you know, we can act, you know, that information can actually be put forth, can be shown to the public, so that people have every reason to believe that, yes, the elections are fair, the elections are, we're, we're having the actual candidates win that voters are, are asking for.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Cindy Meyer. I push messages out to roughly 400 people that are connected with South Dakota canvassing. That's what you see around here, are the people that are coming out because of the information that we are passing around. So we push it out to 400 people, who then message others and push it out to other people. We have pushed this message out nationally as well. Many people in and out of the state are watching this unbelievable fiasco and struggle to retain power situation that is going on here in Minnehaha County, and they simply can't believe it. I talked with a gentleman the other night, and he was asking, he was asking questions after he had read Leah's press release about the 24,000 ballot discrepancy. He just kept saying, "But how can the Secretary of State and the county report votes cast of 90-plus thousand ballots, and yet the machines only accounted for 60,000, 60,000-something? How do, how come they don't reconcile?" He said, "When you work in the polls, the precincts have to balance the number of ballots left to the ballots which, the ballots used, which the ballots used comes from the poll books. If they have to reconcile the number of ballots per the poll books, then why don't they add up to the total from all the precinct poll books, so that they know what the number of ballots is?" I told him it's because the auditor isn't allowed to go look through the boxes to find the poll books. Even though the 22-month federal law for ballot retention has expired for the 2020 ballots, the auditor still has not been able to go look through the boxes. His comment was, "Why are they so afraid? What are they so afraid is hiding in those boxes?" I said, "The proof that the election was stolen."
Hi, Joni Chider, Minnehaha County. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I worked, this is my second election that I worked as a poll worker, and I just wanted to say the other three people that worked with me really took it seriously. We had a great time. It was a lower, a low turnout, which was disappointing, but I challenge anyone to become a poll worker, just to get that off your bucket list. But I wanted to speak to reconciling books, and I'm excited about this hand count. For once, every, I'm a business owner, and every second, third, or maybe even fourth day of the month, if I'm excited enough, I reconcile my own books, and then I send it off to the auditor, to my accountant, to reconcile. And I feel it's very important to at least have two eyes on everything, because I do miss some items, and then they catch it, so that's really nice. So that's one benefit of reconciling the books.
Good morning. Thank you for listening to us today, and I would just like to encourage you to, to back up what Leah want, what, what she wants to do as far as do a hand count, because basically, you're talking about the trust of the public, and since Leah was, was actually voted in, she has some support there. So I think that the wonderful, most wonderful thing about America is that we have freedom, and the freedom that we have, we have to have some kind of responsibility for. So if there's a huge discrepancy, in my opinion, I think you should consider that a full audit, hand count audit, would be a great beneficial, very beneficial to us, because it's, could be a win-win, in fact, because of the fact that if she finds something that could be corrected, it would be even better, and if she finds where the discrepancy is, it would, of course, solve the problem, and going on from this point forward, we would have a really good system. Now, the reason why I'm so interested in this personally is because I, three years ago, moved from a state that, that has a poor voting auditing. In fact, I don't even know if they have auditing, but it is generally understood by the public that you can't trust, you can't trust the voting. And if you can't trust the voting in that particular state, if the attitude is like that, and there are a lot of people moving out of that state, but if you can't do that, you don't, you don't have, don't have freedom like you should have. And I love South Dakota. I love the freedoms that it has. Thank you very much for doing the job you, you do, and please do the audit. Thank you.
Ma'am, we didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Your name?
I'm sorry. I just kind of got all wound up.
You're good.
My name is Sherwin Nicholson, and I live in Sioux Falls. I have lived here for three years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Meyer, Minnehaha County. Since not everybody here is going to get up and speak, I would like to address a question to the people that are here. Anybody here that is in favor of hand counting and what Leah is doing, please respond by saying aye, and this includes the overflow room.
Aye!
Thank you. I read a podcast a couple days ago from a person down in Texas, and the name of his article was "South Dakota County Commissioners Suddenly Interested in Post-Election Hand Count: Eyes of the Nation Are Focusing on Minnehaha County." That's how big this is. How many of you have seen an audit log? I'm talking to the commissioners, and I know you won't respond. I'm assuming none, otherwise shake your head. Okay, no head shaking. Yet the hair on the back of your neck bristles when Leah mentions there is a discrepancy. A former commissioner calls her findings baloney. The Secretary of State, Monae Johnson, doesn't even know nothing about elections to respond, but instead sends one of her staff to give a statement to our fake news, and yes, Kelo, I'm referring to you. She says, "Miss Anderson's claims are mostly taken out of context of what is fact and used to run her own narrative," and also insinuates that Miss Anderson's data may have disappeared before she took office. The Secretary of State's office makes these allegations with absolutely zero proof to back it up. Leah has absolute proof, but you are all too busy finding ways to stop this, to take a moment and look. How many of you have sat down with a member of South Dakota canvassing and asked us about it? Not one. I want to see proof that any of you have that shows that any election was accurate, not when comparing the ballots to the count, when comparing the marks on the ballots to what is reported by our Secretary of State's office. I challenge you to show me. If you have none, it's high time you start supporting the public's interest to find out, and stop trying to undermine the auditor's efforts to find that proof. And yes, we find, we've been asking for two years to get this on the commission agenda, three years, and you've denied us until now, when it comes down to money. From what I understand, this meeting was more about how much it's going to cost than anything else, and I remind you that $90,000 was spent to study the fairgrounds. Why will you not spend a dime, and as Leah said, less than $5,000 to study our elections,
John Chardas, State Representative for District 2 from Valley Springs, Minnehaha County. I just wanted, Leah's my auditor, and all of our auditors, want to just publicly thank her and support her, the job she's doing, and just, you know, appreciate the, even if nothing turns out different, just to know that we audited it and make sure it was done right.
Jennifer Floss, Minnehaha County. Just realized that I've lived in this county, in Sioux Falls, for over 22 years, and I lived here for about three years prior to that, but it wasn't until the 2020 election that I got more plugged in. I was just looking up the definition of an audit, and it says, "A thorough review of a company's financial statement to ensure the financial records are fair and accurate." That sounds great to me. I also worked, this last primary is, is a superintendent with my two children in 502. I had 32 people show up to vote. But I have to say that Leah and Mike and the rest of the staff did a great job in training. I was a first-time worker. And as I stated last week, the Rasmussen Report shows that 2/3 of the country is concerned about the cheating in the 2024 election. I think those are all good reasons to, to audit this election, and of course, I just lost my, I had to put a code on this here, sorry about that. And so one of the things I was reading about, there's three types of audits. An internal audit, which this would be, serves as a managerial tool to make improvements to processes and internal controls. I just think that sounds like a great idea, and I want to thank the auditor for the great
Good morning. Adam Long, Minnehaha County. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some door-knocking that I did and some of the top concerns that I've heard from all of our constituents, from all of the citizens, and we really need to open our eyes to being more present with the people and not so closed-door and so secretive. And, and that goes to all of you. That goes to all of us. It's every one of us that has to do that. We have to do that. And so when I knocked on people's doors, and Dean, I saw your snirk there, and I'm not sure what that means, but I, I mean, I just talked to a lot of people, you know, just walking around, talking to a lot of people, and the, the common thing was, why do we have so many close-door sessions? Why are there, why is there so much stuff that's not being talked about? Why is there, you know, what, what is with all the PACs? What's with all the, I mean, there's just so much talk of that. There's so many citizens truly concerned and wondering what's going on with that. I'm not a polished politician. I haven't been in politics my whole life. I've served my entire life, military, police, firefighting, and I continue. It's what I do. I talk to people, I serve people, and I don't believe in secrets. Okay? So this, this is the model that I live, and it's worked really well for me. I don't know your guys' plan moving forward, and I know, like you guys had said, Dean, you had said that this is a, the first time, you know, this is coming up, and that's great. My prayer and my hope is that you guys support Leah through this, because she's not a polished politician either. She hasn't gone through this and done this, but as a, as an accountant, as someone who has the ability to understand the importance of an audit, none of us in any of our businesses or any of our ventures that we've ever done wouldn't want an audit done. All of our constituents and all of the citizens want the same. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Randy Ammison. I'm about a 40-year resident of Minnehaha County. I'm a veteran. I was torn away from my family 40 years ago to protect some of the same things we're talking about here today. I didn't do it because I wanted to. I did it because it was my duty. I plan on partaking in the recount, not because I want to necessarily. I'm not going to do it for monetary gain. I'm going to throw out the gauntlet to anybody who, who agrees to partake in this, in this audit. If at all possible, do it pro bono. It's a duty. In the military, we protect your freedom. I believe we are protecting all of our freedoms by making sure that what is said at the end of the election is what actually happened in the election, and I believe that the people standing behind me give testament, are sitting behind me, give testament to that. There is a concern. It's, it's your responsibility to do everything that you can to make sure that that concern isn't valid, because if it isn't, I don't, I don't want anybody to believe it is. But if it is, I don't want anybody to believe it's not. That's why I'm participating. So thank you for your time.
Good morning. Ryan Olem from Minnehaha County. First of all, I'd like to say, you know, speaking to all our veterans, all of our current military, all those serving us and protecting us, I sometimes feel like I don't even recognize the country that I live in, because of some of the things that I'm worried about that are happening. I consider my vote very sacred, and I hope that you guys do, do too, and I would like for you to support Leah in everything. I also am a small business owner. We have to audit the books. The state wants to know how many taxes I need to pay, right? I honestly am shocked that there's never been an audit, an election audit before. That is surprising. I also am honored and excited to be participating in this hand audit, hand count audit, and I also, from the get-go, knew that if I could, I would be doing it pro bono, because I feel it's my civic duty. And when this happens, I would like to challenge every single one of you commissioners to show up and see what's going on.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I really had no intention of speaking today, but I think it's shocking the voter turnout, and I think we need to look at why that is. People don't trust the election. I've got relatives that have never registered to vote, they said it doesn't matter. They do whatever they want to do. I think it's time we get, high, high time we get back to encouraging people to come to the polls. We don't, the easier, supposedly, the easier we make the selection, the less people vote. How about if we have them show up at the poll? Don't mail them a ballot unless they're in the military or completely physically disabled to get there. Get to the poll, encourage these people, show that their vote counts. I just encourage you to lead the nation on what goes on here in Minnehaha County, that we do audit our, I, I have no idea why we would not audit our elections. Why would anybody be against auditing those elections? It's the most important thing we do, and I, and I would strongly encourage that we lead the nation in getting this done and done right. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Alicehouse. I'm a resident of Minnehaha County. I was born and raised in South Dakota, educated here, went off, had a career in the surrounding states, and when I retired, I came back. I've been in the county for three months, or three years now, and we happen to be residents of, for lack of a better term, an election reservation. We've been put in a very specific precinct, 416, and we come to find out that there have been votes denied there. We were one of the lucky ones. We stepped up, we, we actually were at the polling place, voted in person, and we know now that our vote counted. That won't always be the case, and we can't be guaranteed that this fall, at the federal election, and the statewide, that we're going to have our votes counted, because we're going to have to do it by absentee ballot. I, this is a different issue from what most everybody here is speaking to, but on the other hand, if it wasn't for this, I'd be sitting with them. I wouldn't be up here speaking against any amount of accountability. But right now, I'm afraid that my vote won't be counted, and I have the right to vote and be heard, and I'll leave you with that. and be heard. And I'll leave you with that.
I don't see anybody getting up, so if we don't have any more public comment, if you plan on public comment, please stand so we can get you counted. Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to. I'm Carol Ella's House, also been a resident for three years here. Love South Dakota, why we're back here. But, and believe me, we believe in transparency, and that's part of the reason that it was shocking to us to find out the absentee ballots from what we now call a voter's reservation. I mean, when we take, and we are now discriminating against a group of people who South Dakota welcomed and wanted their money. You take my taxes very willingly, thousands and thousands of dollars we pay here. We have concealed carry license. We have hunting licenses. We are, we go out and we find out what each of you are doing and how we're going to vote. We're not idle in this community. But we do spend time other places, too. We live in an RV. Our home is no different than a physical one, but now it's been determined that if you are absentee ballot, you're not going to count. And my vote would count because I went in in May, but it won't count in November if I don't. And this is an issue that needs, needs dealt with. Transparency is great. I'm for it. I want it audited. But we are also citizens of South Dakota and do what we can here. The other thing I found out was the representation. The, a board, election board, determined that three people determined that these votes would not count. And in that, they were not representing me. They were not of that precinct. We were told also that we should have been notified that our precinct changed and that that was transparency. But we were not notified our precinct changed. And when you have one precinct be one lot or one building, you're creating right there, what, how trustfully is that? Instead of having it open, having a discussion, and if you, if South Dakota wants to change law and change who's here, there's been people, most people that are probably using that box are South Dakotans. We meet Californians, we meet all people, but you know what? We've tried to buy land in South Dakota, and it's high-priced. Almost every time, it's a Californian coming in with $500,000 or $50,000 more, whatever it is, and they're buying the land, and they're able to vote. The homeless are able to vote. I need to be able to vote, too, and have it counted. And that's part of the...
Ma'am, your three minutes are up. I'm going to ask you to conclude. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you for it.
Thank you. Ryan, everybody gets one shot at the mic. Thank you. Anybody else?
McBaruth, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I appreciate those people who brought up the ballots that were tossed, and I challenge them to go to the auditor's office and pull the voter registration forms for what the precinct board was shown. They were appalled that the ballots that were tossed, the reason they were tossed, is because those people actually lied on their voter registration forms as to their actual residence. I've been to an auditor's office in the state of South Dakota. I had, I asked for 40 voter registration forms from one of these mail-in services, and all but one of them lied on the application as to their residency. That's why it's happening. As long as their voter registration form is good, their votes will not be tossed. All my life, and 56 years old now, I hear people complain about the transparency of government. And now we've got somebody who is willing to be transparent with the public and being crucified by our fake media. This lady dropped this press release, and it was over 48 hours before Kellaland or anybody said a word about it. This should be front and center on national news, that we have a person in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, who is willing to uphold their oath to the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, to give the public the information they need to, to think that our elections are transparent. Scott said it perfectly. There's a reason people don't show up to vote. They don't trust it. The media, you have protection under the Constitution. You are protected. To do and say anything you want because of freedom of speech and freedom of the press, start telling both sides of the story.
Anybody else for public comment? Alrighty. I am going to officially close public comment. I just want to make one quick address here. Mr. Long, I don't know where he went. I just want to thank him for his service, military, law enforcement, et cetera. I did kind of smirk, you're right, when you were talking, because we provided this forum today, so it's not for transparency. This is not behind closed doors. I do want to clarify one thing, and that is, the commission never asked the auditor to explain why she's doing 100% audit. That was kind of put out there that we did. We haven't. We just wanted to know about the process, the cost, the transparency. For some reason, this commission has been painted as adversarial to the county auditor. And I, we have, we have supported her every step of the way with every budget request, everything that she's asked for. So, I don't understand why that perception. Not everybody feels that way, but some people do. We have supported her. If she asked, we did not amend her budget. We have given her exactly what she has wanted. I'm going to call it to order. You all had your chance. All right. Now, moving on to commission. Any commission questions of the auditor or specific comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I had a clarifying question on just the scope of the work here. We talk about it being 100% of precincts, but then the state statute calls for at least doing one statewide race and one other race. But do you plan on doing 100% of the precincts and 100% of the races?
I do, yes.
Can you clarify, because that was one of my questions, too. Are we auditing all the races on each ballot?
We are. We're going to do a 100% audit of the election.
Other questions? Commissioner Bender?
So, I'm curious whether you're still taking applications for that board or if that's closed at this point?
At this point, it's closed because we had to send out appointment letters and go through the process. There wasn't a timeframe of sending those letters out. But once we had enough people that were interested in helping of equal party representation, we had to proceed with that process. And so, those letters went out yesterday. I took them last night at about 7:30 to the North Post Office.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? My question, you touched on the 2020 election, but what about the 2022 election? Why wasn't that one looked at?
Well, when I first got the EMS system, the laptop, all of the data from 2020 and 2022 was not valid in the computer. And so, I was, I had to find the backups off of the S drive and reload the elections. The 2022 data still does not seem to be fully together as far as the backup. So, I'm still working on that. I wouldn't mind auditing every election, but the 2020 data was more accurate when comparing to the state.
Okay. Somewhat of an explanation, I guess.
It's not off the books.
I don't know if I fully grasp it, but okay.
Mr. Chair, another clarifying question. So, just the sequence of events. We've got, the recount is the day before, so June 24th.
Correct.
So, that's the recount, and that's select races. And that will complete that same day, June 24th. And then, will the final tally of the recount then be the official result? You know, if a couple votes change in either direction, or typically, we have some modest change in a recount, is that the final count then that you're comparing and auditing against? Or are you auditing the performance of Election Day? That's just still kind of confusing to me.
Well, and honestly, it would probably be confusing to me as well because I haven't gone through this before. However, the, so the recount will occur the day before. If there are changes, and since one of those recounts is the countywide commission race, so it will encompass the whole county election, that will be, if there's changes that need to be made, then yes, those do become, they're certified. So, then we would have to audit to that, is my understanding.
And then, another just clarified process question on the recount. That's, when you're referred to Judge Hauman, she appoints a recount board that actually conducts that recount?
Correct. So, that board was appointed, and I received her letter last evening. I think it was around 4 o'clock that email came through.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
And in your notes, you mentioned that there's a, that you then turn the, back to the audit. It's difficult to keep these things straight sometimes, the recount and the audit, because they're totally different processes. But the results of the audit, you then turn into the Secretary of State. Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
What is the deadline for that?
So, that deadline is the 26th.
It's been mentioned that, encouraged for Commissioners to attend the audit. And it's kind of ironic because I think you're going to have it in that room right next door when we're having next week's commission meeting, correct?
Correct, yes.
And then, you will brief the commission post-audit. Will that be done at the July 2nd meeting? Is that the intent?
Yes.
Other questions?
I just have a comment to clarify a couple of things that evidently not everybody has all the facts. A week ago, I asked for all of the information that you gave us today or printed. I frankly heard from the media before I heard from you on a lot of this stuff. So, I think there's information that needed to be provided, that it's not just about the money. It was about when it was going to be held, how many members were going to be part of this board, what were the requirements to be on the board, party affiliations, what were we paying, what was the post-election audit expected, how long was it expected to take, the conditions that would trigger a post-election audit, and I can go on and on and on. I just want to say that to accuse us of not being open is totally inaccurate. And you weren't the one that did it. Some of you, the audience, did it. We've never been through this process before. When this thing was put together and we asked the questions, for whatever reason, we were in, kind of in the middle of doing a audit of our own financial pictures and dealing with next year's budget. So, this wasn't the only thing on our, on our agenda. But to say that we weren't open about this is totally inaccurate because we learned about it from the media a few days later, which evidently was sent out to whomever. I don't even know who that is. The information that we got about the 2020 general election wasn't even discussed at that point. So, why this is part of the agenda item right now, I'm not sure, but we'll address that in the future.
I, for one, I'm looking forward to an explanation on the 24,508 ballot difference. It's the auditor's job to, you know, find that, if you, something, if there's a there there, I'd like to know about it, what it is. Look forward to that explanation in a couple of weeks.
Just to clarify, that explanation can only come if I pull out all of the 2020 ballots and records. That would take more than a couple of weeks. I know you've been up there with me to see that room. Everything is piled in the Public Safety Building. It's not organized, and it will take us, it would take me a day to pull the boxes out. So, I just want to clarify that with having the 24 primary post-election audit, the recount, and needing to pull all those records out, which previously I was advised not to do, that I would like to get to the bottom of that. It will take some time, and I will get it done as long as I'm not breaking any laws, so.
And the commission has not fought you on that?
No, I've mentioned it before in other commission meetings, and it was suggested that I may not be able to do that. I remember Commissioner Bender made that statement to me at one point in time. You're correct. I, you asked for information, and I provided it. I've talked about the post-election audit at other meetings ever since the word "post-election audit" came about, and ever since the legislation passed that bill. And so, I have brought this up at many meetings in the past.
Mr. Chair, I'll just make one comment with an add to the 2020 data. As I think we've been talking about here, I think it's hard enough for the public. If one of our goals is faith in the elections and clarity and people understanding the process, I think it's been hard enough to understand that we had an election, we're having a recount, and we're having a post-election audit. There's a lot of moving pieces there, and that's why I would say it's irresponsible to have released this information, whatever it is. I still don't understand this. And you seem to be saying that it's partial information. You would have to go through everything to do a complete audit. So, I just don't know that it's best practice to release information halfway through an audit. For example, at our budget meeting that we're going to be spending three hours at later today, if I just pulled out one section of that PowerPoint and it only showed $60 million of our $100 million budget, and I just released that to the press and said, "Hey, something's missing here." Wink, wink, nod, nod. Maybe there's been some embezzlement, or some money is missing, or whatnot. That would be an example of an irresponsible act. So, to release this and a screenshot of a, of a spreadsheet that is supposed to be some smoking gun, there's just no there there. And to release that halfway through, that would be my critique of the conduct here of if we're looking for faith and credibility and integrity in a process, we should follow that process. We talk about fidelity to the Constitution, the rule of law. Well, we are a nation of laws. We need to follow the rules. And, you know, things that were brought up, things around that I'll defer to the recount board to deal with. But I think we do have some serious issues of federal law and equal protection on our friends in precinct 416. And so, I think that's all the comment I'll make to that one at this point. But to throw the 2020 election, and I know that's a motivating force in a lot of this group's work, but to throw that into the middle of quality work that we're working on 2024, we agree with a post-election audit. You know, the state legislature put that in place. Let's see it through. Then, when we get to the other side of that, maybe there are some lessons learned. I'm open to that. But to throw in a press release and to just basically a series of events of conduct that I just don't see how any of that would come from a person that's wearing the role of, "I want to increase integrity in this process." The way you engage with different media groups and whatnot, I just think we got some half-baked information here, and we wanted a briefing on the main topic of the day. And again, that briefing included some information that I think is extraneous and half-baked at best. So, that's my comment on that portion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, do I get to respond to that? Thank you. My spreadsheet is not half-baked. I spent a lot of time going through those numbers. The audit log is in a spreadsheet. It was converted into a spreadsheet, which I am not allowed to release to the public. I am also not allowed to release the cas foot record to the public, but I can have it analyzed. When I had it analyzed, it disturbed me. When I had it analyzed, it disturbed me. It also disturbed me when I went back and I watched the canvas of the 2020 general election. It took the canvassing board two minutes to canvas that election. When I asked to canvas the election for the 24 primary, it didn't take very much time either. However, a little more work was done. At that election canvas, I presented poll books, registration lists, I presented recap sheets, I presented every bit of documentation that was needed to properly canvas an election. All that was done was one computer list was compared to the other computer list. Nobody on the canvassing board decided to pull those documents that I provided and make sure that the ballot count was correct. So when I found out that the ballot count does not look correct for the 2020 election, it does become an issue, because that's part of the canvas. Doubt in my mind, I was presented by our Department Head of IT, and I was told a few months ago that I needed to find a way to have trust in our election. And if I didn't, they were not going to assist me. Well, I still have not found trust in our election, and I've done the research that I can do, and I will continue to do more research. I would like to pull out 2020 and look at it, and I would be the first one that if I'm wrong about those numbers, if there's something missing in the audit log that should be there to make those numbers balance, I will be the first one to admit it to you that I'm wrong. And you know that, because I've done that in other situations. If I'm wrong about something, I will tell you. But I don't want to be accused of doing work that I shouldn't have done, because it's my job to audit, and it's my job to be your county auditor and to uphold my duties.
Any other commission comments or questions? Commissioner Bender.
Well, I feel like I should just note that during the canvassing board, you were to lead that process, and you provided documents, but you provided no process.
I did.
And so we, we did what the statute seems to require. And I'd like to just follow up on that with another question for you, because when I asked you, and I know that this has been publicly played as pushback, and I was really just trying to understand, because we typically, for an open meeting, we publish what we're going to talk about, so people know what is going to be on the agenda and talked about. And your published memo was different than what you came to the meeting and asked for, which was fine. Didn't give you any pushback about doing an audit. I was just trying to understand what changed. And when I asked you about that, and I went back and looked at the meeting last night, because I just wanted to make sure that I was remembering things correctly, and I asked you why you were wanting to do the 100% audit. You indicated that you'd reviewed the recap sheets, and you noticed turnout was low. And, and everybody acknowledges turnout was low, and we're all, I think anybody in this room would say that they're, you know, distraught, or upset, or sad that turnout was low. And I think we all do what we can try to get folks to vote. And that you said that you knew that you could quickly count the ballots because of the training you had, and that you wanted to reassure the public about the count. And then you said that the 100% audit could help candidates who had very close races. And I think I made a mistake at that point and didn't try to clarify, because the audit doesn't help, it's the recount that helps the people in close races, correct?
Not correct. The audit will also help candidates that have a close race, because we are provided with codified law that if the results of the audit show a discrepancy, the impacted candidates must be notified and have seven days to file a verified petition requesting another recount. So we would have the recount on the 24th for the candidates that have filed a petition already. But when we do the audit on the 25th, if there's another race that's been impacted that has a discrepancy, and it doesn't say how big that discrepancy is, that they have seven days to file a verified petition for recount.
And I don't want to get into semantics with you, but really, it's the recount that helps the candidate, whether it's a recount after an audit, or whether it's the recount that you're having before the audit. But it's the recount process that helps the candidate. The audit is just simply an audit of the election. It doesn't change anything.
It can change something. If there is a discrepancy, the candidate has seven days to ask for a recount.
I'm not going to argue semantics with you. I still think it's the recount that changes. The thing that I noticed, and that's different about the information you provided today, is that you're saying today that the reason you're doing the recount is because of this information you got in May that you didn't have a chance to look at until the weekend before the canvassing, but yet you never mentioned that information at all during the canvassing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to correct your word, audit, not recount. Correct. I got that information. I finally had time late on Sunday to review the information and had more time to dig into it even on Monday. But I had already presented you with your canvassing materials. And in the past, at a meeting, if I've brought something up that wasn't on the briefing memo, that's why I prefaced this briefing memo with a statement that I may have more information, because in the past, when I've done that, I've been criticized of not sharing that information ahead of time. Now, one thing I did not have available to me at the canvas, but I did try to explain it in the briefing memo, was the process of the canvas. And then I also, since we had canvassing members that were not, did not have availability to Civic Clerk, since we had people sitting in, I provided the canvassing board with instructions on the canvas, and it was on everybody's desk, along with all the documentation that I provided. And in that, it says that members may also compare the election results from the abstract reports and the summary reports. And then I explained there would be differences based on the provisional ballots. I also stated that one member of the canvassing board can read aloud the number of voters who pass ballots from the poll list, and another member can compare that number to the list of voters reported. When I explained, and I had the carts up here with the binders on them, and the poll list, I told you, were tucked inside of each binder, that each binder represented a registration list, and the poll list that was inside that book, both the absentee and the in-day, or in-person voting, was there. And then I showed you, I had a stack of pink recap sheets, and I said that those should all be compared to make sure that the vote count totals, meaning the total ballots, just the pieces of paper, were accurate. And then I also provided to each member of the canvassing board a recap sheet that I had spent five hours on Sunday preparing for you, and nobody looked at that recap sheet.
I'd like to go back to the, you, you and I are trying to talk about different things. So back to the issue of transparency, when we had the canvassing vote, and you were talking about the reason for doing the 100% audit, you did not bring up this report that you had had for a month. That didn't come up at all during the canvassing board.
Because it didn't have anything to do with this canvas that you were working on.
But in your memo today, you're saying that's the reason that you're asking for the 100%?
It's part of the reason why I would like to do a complete audit. And it's also part of the reason why I would like to go back and audit other elections.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, well, I for one, want to thank the auditing board, the people that are going to serve on that, and the recount board. There's a lot of work going to be involved next Monday and Tuesday, so it'll be interesting. More to come, basically. We'll be having more information at our July 2nd meeting, and I'm looking forward to see what the outcome is. So thank you to everybody who participated today. We're going to move on with our agenda. If you're really interested in public government, county government, I encourage you to stick around for our budget hearing. It'll go from 11:30 till about 3:00. The real work of the county commission. So, thank you, everybody. We will take a 10-minute recess. Moving on to our agenda item number 10, consider a motion to authorize the state's attorney to sign two agreements for Indian Child Welfare Act Qualified Expert Witness Services, Eric Boge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Boge, Deputy State Attorney. In my role as Chief Civil Deputy in our office, I have the honor of overseeing a very talented group of attorneys and staff that work to protect children who have been subject to abuse and neglect in our county. In that role, however, we're actually the attorneys for the Department of Social Services, and their obligation is to help provide expert witnesses. And through that process, they have crafted several years ago, a dual contract system where they contract with us to provide us the monetary support to do that. We in turn contract with Yellow Robe Consulting, who in fact then provide the qualified expert witnesses to come testify on our behalf on the various aspects of ICWA cases that are involved in A&amp;N cases. So the two contracts that we're asking for authorization to enter into are two that you've seen numerous times in the past. One is with the state of South Dakota, and the other one is with Yellow Robe Consulting. If you have any questions, it's the same basic contract we've done numerous times in the past. The dollar amount has crept up slightly, like everything else does, but otherwise, it's the same process, same contract.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. All right, moving on to commission action.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. So, I'm sorry, Eric, do we have to have two separate actions on A and B, or is that?
Mr. Chair, I think they're so interrelated that one motion, one vote would be fine for our purpose, but I appreciate the question.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to agenda item 11, consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a lease agreement for the Hartford Radio Tower site. Captain Bosman, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Sheriff's Office. I have in front of you this morning an agreement that I'm requesting you to review and authorize. It is a, an agreement between us and the landowners of one of our radio communication tower sites. This is a site that was originally housed of a tower that Metro Communications had. A strong derecho came through, blew down the site, and Minnehaha County is taking over that site with our emergency first responder and highway safety communications tower. So putting up a new tower, it was time to renew the lease with that land, and so we have an agreement with them that has been reviewed by the state's attorney's office and the family of the landowners, and we would like to have you authorize that.
All righty. Public comment on this agenda item. All right, commission action.
Make a motion to approve the lease agreement.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign the proposal with Sabre Industries for a radio tower in Garrettson.
Continuing on with our wide counties spread radio communications network, one of the sites is the Garrettson site. We have started the equipment shelter and the communications infrastructure work on that site there. The original plan was to go onto the water tank of Garrettson. However, after analyzing it and looking at the ground requirements of that, it would not be in the best interest of us spending the money and putting all of our highly sensitive and expensive radio equipment on a structure that is not grounded very well. One lightning strike and we could be starting all over again. So we have a plan in place that a 60-foot freestanding tower could be constructed right next to that water tank, which would then house our equipment and safely be able to withstand any sort of weather elements from there.
All right, public comment on this item. Commission action.
Can I ask a question quick?
Please.
So is this within the budget that you guys had already had approved for this project, this construction of the tower?
This would be planned within that authorized ARPA money that we're looking at, and that's why it is a bid contract with NASPO, which is a, follows our procurement standards. But yes, that is planned to lump that within our existing budget agreement.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to sign the 2024 High Intensity Drug Traffic Areas Subrecipient Agreement. Captain Bosman.
Good morning again, Commissioners. As the federal government loves their acronyms, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas, also we call it as HIDA, is an agreement that we have annually between the state and the federal government that provides funding to our sheriff's office for drug enforcement personnel, equipment, and training. As part of this agreement that is presented every year, it is a subrecipient to Minnehaha County as we receive the funds that come from the federal government to the state, to Minnehaha County. And so the subrecipient agreement for 2024 would allow us to continue the valuable uses of those funds as we investigate drug crimes in Minnehaha County.
And no match required.
Correct.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item. All right, moving on then to commission action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Consider a motion to adjust county meal and mileage reimbursement rates consistent with the state of South Dakota. Morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The request I have before you today is to essentially approve automatic updates to the employee handbook when there's a mileage change at the state level. So the intent is that we would mirror the state mileage reimbursement rate and meal reimbursement rates. The only immediate impact to this is that there are intending to make a change effective July 1st, which would impact mileage, which would be a change from .51 cents, or 51 cents, to .655.
All right, public comment. Commission questions and action. I guess I have a question, or clarification. This is a one-time change so that it continuously matches future years going forward, correct?
Exactly. This would mean that from this point going forward, we would no longer come back to ask for a specific handbook change whenever those rates change. Instead, we would apply those automatically.
Commission action. Commissioner Bender.
Yeah, I would just say, we did have an opportunity to talk about this at our last meeting. This is consistent with what our practice has been, to typically raise the rate to match the state rate. And so I think that this makes sense, and I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for reimbursement of asphalt work completed within South Dakota Department of Transportation right of way. They owe us money, let's get it.
You got it.
All right.
Once again, Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent. Last year, as part of our Mill and Overlay project, we were on Conner Road, Highway 110. There's a half a mile of that road is inside the Mid-Dot right of way. We worked with them to do the Mill and Overlay on their portion. Now we're just getting reimbursed for the work that we paid for.
All righty. Public comment on this agenda item. Turn it to the commission for action or questions.
And make a motion to assign the agreement.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Bennega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a change order between Minnehaha County and Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation for MC 2401 Micro Surfacing.
Once again, Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent. Our seal, our micro sealing contract came in about a half million dollars under budget this year. In Minnesota, they've been doing some micro milling in advance of micro surfacing with excellent ride quality results. Being we came in under contract, and our contractor performs this work, we talked to both Aztec and RDU Equipment about testing the two types of micro milling on Highway 105 north of I-90. Our intention with your approval- Our intention with your approval is to do a micro mill to level out the road surface to improve ride quality, and we're going to do each type over one mile, and then we're going to retest the road for ride quality to see if this is a new way for less money than doing an overlay that we can increase ride quality on some of our rough roads.
Public comment. Commission action.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign a subrecipient agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Social Services for medicated, medication-assisted treatment in the county jail. Good morning, Warden.
Good morning, Mike Matson, Warden of the Minnehaha County Jail. This is annual renewal of this agreement. We're receiving $89,108 for this next year for medication-assisted treatment in the jail from Department of Social Services.
Public comment. I have a question if nobody else does. What type of medication are we, I mean, are these non-psych, or psychotic drugs, or antipsychotic, or people needing help with mental illness, or what, can you?
This is, this is for opiate addiction and narcotics. So, we use a Suboxone film. We're transitioning to an injectable, though. We've realized that we have enough funding to do the injectable, and that way, we don't have any diversion from the sublingual film.
So, kind of a detoxifying process for, to assist people in the jail?
It's not detox, it's to help with their addiction. It takes the craving away.
Okay.
So, there's, we have a process of screening who would be appropriate, and then those peoples that are flagged that could be appropriate are vetted out through chemical, chemical assessment, chemical dependency assessment. We partner with Southeastern Behavioral Health, and we'll initiate the medication in the jail, and then if they're getting out, then we, we're partnering with Falls Community Health, so they have a place to go to continue it.
Is this typically court ordered?
No, this is not.
Okay. So, it's voluntary on the?
Right. It's basically our candidates are done through, are selected through our screening process, and our mental health counselors can also advocate saying, hey, this person would benefit from this.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize the chair to sign the new proposed prisoner housing agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. Mr. Matson.
Again, Mike Matson, Warden of the jail. This is a new contract, a new housing contract with Lincoln County. Our existing one will expire in September of 2024. This new contract has the same language in it as the previous one, and extends for another term of five years with annual options for increasing bed rate. It has been approved by the Lincoln County Commission already, and I now leave it to you.
All right. Public comment. Commission action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye. Motion carries. That ends our regular agenda. We now have the opportunity for public comment. Public comment is limited to five minutes on a non-agenda item and total of 30 minutes.
Morning again. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. I've been at the canvas of the vote in 2022 and again last week. The thing that appears obvious to me is that you folks are clueless about the election process, and you are signing off on it. I say you were clueless because I too was until I got involved in 2021. My first call-up to duty was to go and watch the ballots be counted by the tabulators in Lincoln County for the June primary 2022. I had absolutely no clue what I was doing, but I was sent there to watch, and that's what I did. I watched. I watched the ballots go through the tabulators. I watched as the ballots jammed one after another. I had questions about how do you know for a fact those ballots didn't get counted, but I was informed I could not speak. So, as we were watching, I noticed that thumb drives appeared and got inserted into the machines periodically. Those thumb drives would then get removed, taken over to someone sitting at another computer. When the data from the thumb drive was verified or downloaded, the thumb drive would be brought back to the folks running the tabulators. I didn't realize it at the time, but I was watching a violation take place. You aren't to use the same thumb drives repeatedly because they could now be compromised by being inserted into a computer that's connected to the Internet. Then in October of 2022, Gary and I were assigned as poll workers by Ben Kite. However, when Ben found out we were on the ballot, running for precinct committee positions, and even though we were assigned to another precinct, he still removed us. After a call to the Attorney General and peer, who could offer up no resolution, a call to the Minnehaha GOP Chair, who again could offer no solution, Gary and I came in to talk to Ben Kite, who was accompanied by Eric Boge. You see, there was no law stating we couldn't be poll walker, poll workers in another precinct. We went with Ben, who of course was accompanied by Eric, and we asked to see the law. Ben couldn't produce a law, because there is no law, but rather, it was Ben's opinion that we couldn't be poll workers, and that he had gotten his opinion agreed upon by Eric Boge. But nothing lost, because then Gary and I became poll watchers. Again, another learning opportunity, and I witnessed that poll workers in the precinct I was at were inadequately trained. And they were not following the law. They never asked voters for their name, and at the end of the night, only on my insistence, did they have equal party representation in transporting the ballots back to the administration building. Again, that's a law. Now, in June of '24, we have gotten to be poll workers. We've been trained. We were offered additional training, so we took that as well. We worked our assigned polling location, witnessing firsthand how the operation worked. I watched the machine counting on April 9, 2024, witnessed for myself, again, the thumb drives going back and forth between computers, a total violation, putting the hardened computer at risk. I have watched the canvas of the vote two times now. The canvas under Bob Litz in 2020 took a whole five minutes, and that's a stretch. When I watched it with Ben Kite as auditor, I thought it was a complete joke, because he practically spoon-fed the commissioners on what to look for. On this canvas, Leah put in considerable time in preparing documents for your review, but my main takeaway is that you have no idea how our elections run. You are signing off on an election when it is pretty clear you have no idea the pieces that go into it. You are just given some papers and told how to go through them, and you do it. Do you really think that's, do you really think with as thorough as Leah is, that her numbers wouldn't balance? But you are just going through the motions. You're putting your signature onto documents for an election you are clueless about. I've had a phone call with you, Dean, back in 2022. I've had a couple of phone calls with you. You told me in one of your calls that you suspected there probably was fraud going on in the nursing homes, because you'd had a number of complaints about it. You said it yourself, you suspected there was fraud, but yet you still sign off on an election that you don't truly understand the mechanics of. And if you suspected there was fraud, why can we not suspect that fraud is happening?
Anybody else for public comment to the commission? All right, I'm going to close the public comment, move on to commission liaison reports. Commissioner Benega.
As you well know, I'm sorry, you and I attended the metro management, excuse me, meeting last week. There was considerable discussion about the budget presentation to both the city and the county in the future, and adjusting the revenue down to 4% rather than either the eight or the six that were proposed, so that will make a revenue adjustment for metro management. The other thing that I think we were a little surprised with, and maybe a little disappointed, is that we're still having trouble trying to find personnel. We're 25% down in employment needs. Thankfully, the fire and police light duty personnel are helping us with that particular problem, but there needs to be more emphasis and maybe a different method of trying to find personnel, because it's still a challenge.
I would echo that. Everything Commissioner Benega just said, maybe elaborate a little bit, you know, we had originally proposed, or had been proposed to us, that a 6% escalator in our budget to metro communications. But because of the 911 change to the 911 funding law by the state legislature for a year and a half, it really did have an impact moving forward, so we were able to adjust the county and the city's contribution. Regarding personnel, you know, we are, and correct me, I'm probably going to get the classes wrong, our police and fire are Class A or B for retirement? Class B, which mandates an earlier retirement, and our metro communications people who go through the same background checks and a lot of the same training are Class A, and there is a second attempt, because there was one in previous years, to bring them to a Class B employee, allowing for earlier retirement. Hopefully, make greater incentive for recruiting and that type of thing. I talked to a young lady who's a 911 operator out in Mitchell, just happened to call me, and I asked her what she did, and they're going through the exact same problems. And she was very happy to hear that, you know, we are trying to lead the charge on, on that change to the retirement system for our metro communications people. So, it's going to take legislative action and approval by the South Dakota retirement system. Need them to get on board. So, we're really trying to work that to incent that those people that work in our 911 operations center don't receive enough thanks or recognition for their very, very difficult work that they do. They're not maybe running into a burning building, or facing, you know, the bad guys, but, you know, they're the ones that take the call, and they're the ones listening to the distress on the other end. And then they hang up the phone, and they don't know where it went, what happened typically, you know. It's, it's a very difficult job. So, we just owe our gratitude to them.
Yeah. Ironically, while we were there, they had a staff person who had a medical emergency at the 911 system. So, they had to practice what they preached.
All right. Moving on then. Any other liaison? Commissioner Bender.
I just would like to mention that this Thursday, on June 20, there is a summer block party that the county is helping to sponsor at Granite Valley Park, which is, for those of you don't know, north of I-90, off of Cliff Avenue on 67th Street. And so, that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I know they had a great turnout for this event last year, and hoping for a better turnout even this year.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just one note. I appreciated Chris Lilah, our Equalization Director, making a cameo appearance today, talking about TIFs. But also, just note that yesterday was the first day of the legislative summer study on property taxes, and I think the legislators mainly got to focus on an education around assess, assessment process and whatnot. So, Chris wasn't one of the presenters, but a couple of his, the sister counties, I think Brookings County Equalization Officer, presented. And so, we'll probably maybe put that on Tom's radar as maybe a briefing here in another month of how that summer study is going, and if Chris, as one of our local experts, could cut through what they're focusing on and things like that. I know Meredith's working on it as well, but just expecting some potential legislative focus on property taxes next legislative session.
Meredith, you were there, correct? Okay. Any thoughts?
No, nothing too groundbreaking in the first one. I think it was a learning opportunity for a lot of the legislatures and legislators, excuse me. And yeah, heard from Director of Equalization from Brookings County and Pennington, and then Department of Revenue as well. So, it was a good start, and I think they kind of are figuring out their, their next steps, what they're going to do at the next meeting. And I know they've discussed having our director, Chris, at one of those summer studies.
Okay, good. Other commission liaison reports. Non-commission discussion. All right. We do have an executive session, so I'm going to look for a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 2, 1, 3, and 4, and 6.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are going to go into executive session in this room, and just as soon as Joel can turn down the.